All right, welcome to the April 4th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. We have one public hearing and then from there we're going to our regular meeting. And it's basically is a continuation from our last meeting. And the, under it was the old business where we had April Pandora, owner of Eden Urban Gardens LLC is requesting a text amendment definition for Market Garden. I know at the last meeting the mayor was not present. Chris is not here today and I didn't know if you wanted to just give a brief outline of what you're requesting or if there's any questions on the garden. What? Oh, let me, let me do the roll call first, okay? Thanks. Go ahead, Jerry, thank you.
Yes, sir. Chairman Gears?
Here.
John Brown?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Chris Brown did call and told us that he would not be able to be here, so we'll get a motion.
Okay, thank you. If you want to come up in case, because we had a chance to review stuff in case there's any other questions, concerns before we close the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. It's not?
You're on.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Okay, so for folks that weren't here in February, what we are is we are an urban market garden. We're in our third year in our production, in our business. We use organic practices. We currently grow on a half an acre that we lease in the city of Cincinnati from a private landowner and we're looking to purchase land so that we have long-term sustainability for our crops, which are mostly herbs and vegetables, a lot of perennial herbs and some berries and fruits. So we found a lot in Lawn Avenue that the land bank owns. We've gone through their extensive venting process, which takes two months. We were approved by the Hamilton County Land Reutilization Corporation, which is the land bank. So they want us to purchase the property, but they said we need to go through the city of Norwood because currently agriculture is only permitted as a secondary use if there is a house on the property. There is no house on the property, so the interpretation is that agriculture cannot be done as a primary use on the vacant land. So we are asking the city of Norwood to reconsider that and to allow Market Gardens on vacant land. Right now it's looking more like a conditional use, which means we'd have to go to BZA zoning and they can put whatever stipulations they would want. Everything is reviewed on a case-by-case basis. And so that's the summary of it.
Okay. Any questions from?
Any questions?
With that being in a public hearing, do we have anyone who wants to speak in favor of the change? Anyone who would want to speak in favor of the change? All right. Do we have anyone who would like to speak against a change? Do we have anyone who would like to speak against a change? Okay, since we had no one come forth on either one, then I would, we have no new business. I would ask, do we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Motion to adjourn the public hearing.
We have a second. That, you want to call the roll, Jerry, please?
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Chairman Gears?
Yes. All right, thank yous. The, we'll move into our normal, regular meeting and can we do the roll call for that, please?
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Chairman Gears?
Here.
John Brown?
Here.
And Chris Brown, like I said earlier, did call in and has said he would not be able to make the meeting.
Thank you. What we have in our packet underneath old business, well, we have the minutes from our February 7th meeting.
I'll make a motion if the ministry accepts it as right with no additions or corrections.
And I'll second that since we were the two here present, since Chris isn't here. Do you want to call the roll on that, please, Jerry?
Yes. Chairman Gears?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
It's Dan.
All right. Thank you. Under old business, we have one piece of business. We have April Pandora, owner of Eden Urban Gardens LLC is requesting a text amendment definition for Market Garden. I open it up for any discussion, questions, concerns, or motions.
Greg, is there anything you want to, can I add on this?
As we discussed last time, I think we wanted to take a further review and take a month to sort of look this over. I think it was leaning towards a potential of a conditional use and then there was the discussion of whether it would be a conditional use in residential or a conditional use in residential, commercial, and general business. It was also requested that we look into sort of provisions that were done from other communities. And that's if you look in the back of your staff report right there of the recommendation. There's the first one, which is number one, the definition. Number two, potentially allow the Market Garden as a conditional use. That means it would be reviewed and other conditions could be put on from the BZA. And third, there's a list of sort of provisions that would go along with the Market Garden being allowed. So if we want to read through these, I can do that. It said the Market Garden shall not affect the residential feel of the neighborhood. The Market Garden shall not generate pedestrian or vehicular traffic substantially greater than that normally generated by residential activities in the surrounding area. No more than two vehicles shall be parked on site, including those parked within enclosed structure. Mechanicalized equipment similar in scale to that designed for household use shall be permitted to repair the land between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Use of larger mechanical farm equipment is prohibited. The Market Garden shall be so conducted as to not cause offensive or objectionable noise, vibration, smoke, odors, humidity, heat, cold, glare, dust, dirt, or electrical disturbance which is perceptible by the average person at or beyond any lot line contained in the Market Garden. Shipping and delivery of products or supplies shall be limited between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. and shall occur only in the, in single rear axle straight trucks or smaller vehicles normally used to serve residential neighborhoods. Chemical and fertilizer use shall not exceed that typical and residential activity. Rodents, vermin, and insects shall not exceed that typical and residential areas. Overhead lights shall be prohibited. Teaching of organized classes totaling more than 10 persons at a time shall be prohibited. Signs in residential districts shall follow the residential sign standards. And selling of vegetable on site shall be prohibited. An accessory structure shall be constructed to the satisfaction of the board of zoning appeals. So I know there's quite a few of them here, but I think it addressed at least some of the concerns of the commissions that was brought up to make sure that it doesn't exceed the use in a residential district.
Okay, I have, on item number two?
Yeah.
Where it says no more than two vehicles shall be parked on site. If I remember from our last meeting, there was going to be no parking on site because there's no curb cuts. And if there was going to be, you'd have to have a curb cut, plus you'd have to have a paid parking area to park the vehicles on. So just, if the way I would read it, the way it is right here, I would, in the same way excluding those parked in an enclosed structure, well, we're not allowing any enclosed structure. So I don't know if that suggests or could come back to suggest that, yeah, well, you can park two vehicles on an unpaid area and, well, we can park them in a structure. So I don't know if that needs to be, that's just my input on that, or my two cents worth on that.
And I think we can use that, we can either switch the language that no vehicles can be parked on site. That, this is very site-specific on this one. This would be if there's another site, let's say that already has a driveway that's already there, that you could park on site. Where this one, part of the conditions of the BZA or a recommendation of it could be that there's no curb cuts or no additional driveway access to the site. So there's two different ways that I think that could be handled.
Okay.
But we could make it a condition. It would be one of those that, let's say there was a driveway.
I understand, but, but being conditional, that would be where each individual place would come up. But this is more general, whether we're going to make this a conditional site?
Yeah.
Then it needs to be conditional?
Yeah.
I mean, on that site specifically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I really appreciate everybody's efforts and I, and I watched the tape of the last meeting. I'm looking at this, this doesn't seem, this seems to be a lot of trouble for a garden. There could be a lot of regulations that, who's going to enforce them? Who's going to check on it? One other complaint's going to come in. And then we go from there is, we have other properties and everything. Why are, are we opening up Pandora's box? I'll be honest with you, I think there's, there's a partial interest and part of those properties up there as it stands that we're, we're going to do some research into. And I, I'm not so sure that we're not into an area where it's going to be more trouble than it's worth. I mean, there's plenty of land in the city of Cincinnati, there's plenty of land in the county. There's plenty of land available. I just, I'm not starting, I'm starting to wonder if we're just not going to make it more difficult than what it should be and it's going to be more trouble than it's worth. Now, that's just my thought. And I'm concerned about the other properties around and where do we draw the line? If we put a garden up there, somebody else wants to put a garden down there, somebody will want to put a garden over there, that's my property, why can't I do it? We're going to do it over here and we're not property. And I'm not so sure we're making it more difficult than, than what it's worth and if we're not opening Pandora's boxes. Just my thought.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
I agree with the entire concept of what you're doing. I just don't agree with it in a residential area. If it was, like right now, you're in a park, right? Aren't you in, like in North, or, you've got two places, one in Pleasant Ridge and one in another place?
Both are in residential areas.
They're in residential areas? Okay. This, it's my opinion, I don't think it belongs in a residential area. So...
We're out in a residential area, if I may ask, in Pleasant Ridge.
I have one off Montgomery that's very, very small. And then I have a half an acre here down in Spring Grove Village. I respect your opinions and your concerns, but what you have to understand is this land has been vacant for seven years, is owned by the land bank, and the land bank is trying to get a business to develop it. And we are a business that can do that. You know, urban agriculture is helping to have local food in the community. We serve, we serve the Norwood residents, we sell at their farmer's market. There are community gardens that is on Williams Avenue in Elsmere. I wrote the plans for that. I pitched it at a PTA meeting when I lived in Norwood four years ago and gave it to Jeannie and Jeannie pushed it through Norwood. That was my idea. I have good ideas and if they are implemented, they will be successful. Whether you choose to recommend this or not, that's on you guys, but I feel that this is a real opportunity that, you know, if it's not pushed forward, you know, would be very unfortunate. And as far as Mr. Williams, there is land and we have been looking for two years, but we are competing with people building houses. We are competing with large companies that can pay $60,000 for land. That's not something we can do being a smaller business.
There's also possibility down, down, down the line that that property could also sell. I mean, so, but like I said, it's, it's, the Williams Avenue thing was more or less for a neighborhood and for the kids at Williams Avenue School. That, that was the concept of, as I understood it, because they had a chef down there working to teach the kids on, on the growing of the product and then the transferring the product to the table. That was, my understanding of it was, was a very, it was an educational thing and it wasn't necessarily all food. So that, that was, to me is, is a difference, so.
It is a different format. We are running this as a business. We do have a production on site. I did have a background in sustainable agriculture. I've studied academically. I've worked on four other type of growing operations, all of them organically grown. But, you know, to just have land that's sitting there vacant that could be utilized, that could be developed, that could be owned, you know, we are legally bound if we develop this by the Hamilton County Land Reutilization Corporation. We have monthly reports that come in, they come out to the site and I mean, they're closely monitoring. So, you know, when you're talking about, this isn't just somebody that has an idea, you know, we're already doing this, we're already selling this. You can talk to Jeannie, you know, we're at the farmer's market. We are the consistent producer there that sells. So I understand your concerns with the community, but this is an extremely small-scale operation. So I think the suggestions that the planning has put forward and the conditional use would be ideal. That way, if there are things on the property, they can be addressed on a case-by-case basis.
Jerry, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I've met with April early on and I think the concept is good, but I have a real hard time taking land that can be utilized for new housing stock and dedicating it to this. I'm kind of on the same page as John when we talked about that in the last meeting. I just think the land could be better utilized.
Okay.
And why hasn't it been if it's been sitting for seven years? There's been no offers. I mean, you have to let a bird in hand is worth two in the bush. I just think, you know, there is, yeah, there is a little bit of risk, but I think we need to keep in perspective the opportunity that is at hand. You have a business that has resources, that has money, you know, we're not getting it for free. We have to buy it from the land bank. It's going to be under a legal contract from the land bank to develop this and to follow through, or we lose the land. You know, that's going to own it, that's going to pay the taxes on it, that's going to build the community, that's going to be another business, that's going to make the community more livable, that people want to come here and live because there's progress, because Norwood is open-minded to new things. And it has huge value to the neighborhood.
I understand that, but right now we're moving into the process of, we, for whatever reason, the city ended up paying taxes on property, on lots that we own. And we're in the processes, because we're required, if I say anything, Mr. Law Director, please fill in and correct me, that, that we're, we're in the process of paying taxes that we, we are required to pay. Once those taxes are paid off, then the land can be, can be disposed of, such as, and we are also in the discussion, we had one vacant lot where a house is, is being built on it, a really nice house. And we are now going to be looking at design functions for vacant lots and stuff like that, where single-family homes are going to go in. And this could be, and this has been a long time coming, so this could be one of those parcels of property that two homes conforming to the neighborhood could be built and, the property could be acquired and built on. So that's, you know, and you're right, it sat for seven years. There was a lot of legal reasons for that, but it did sit for seven years. And I would rather, to be honest with you, take the time, wait. If you look at the, like the community garden in Williams and Regent Elsmere, it's a different, it's a different story. That's, that's a corner lot that, that the kids use and the kids are educated on. That's a different animal than the other lots that are spread throughout the city that the law department's been working on to make sure that we get those taxes paid off. So those lots can be transferred to independent builders to put homes on there that conform with the neighborhood. That's the intent of the whole thing.
Any other questions, comments? Is there anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move the debate aside.
A second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, would you take a vote, Jerry?
Yes. Mayor Williams?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Chairman Gears?
Yes. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, April. Underneath new business, we have general discussion of the residential design guidelines. Has anyone had an opportunity to look it over? Asked any questions or, you know, we can take it with us again and review it for next month. Greg, you have anything?
However...
Please?
If I can discuss it or...
Yeah, that's fine. If you want to.
Okay.
Just take a, kind of give us a general update.
I think it was a number of months back, specifically Chris Brown, one of the members of the commission, had brought up the infill housing that's going on and the housing market within the city of Norwood and just what the mayor had discussed, that some of these dormant lots are now being filled with housing. And I think what we are trying to do is make sure that the residential development fit in with the character of the historic homes that were there. So this is a, an attempt to take the path of least resistance like we, we did with the zoning code for the commercial lots, to set some standards so that the city is protected if a new house comes in and create some standards with it. So you'll see there's numerous sections that create additional definitions. And then if you look through, you'll see these tables that we have similar to our general business district and office. That was requested from the, the building department. They're just a lot easier to read and utilize, I think. I think they've been a benefit. They also don't do the telescoping, which you'll now see in that. So if you look at the first pages of your document down here, kind of the, the one that says R1 residential?
Yes.
You'll, you'll see that some of that is crossed out. And I think, did Carrie kind of, probably the most recent, was it color one?
Yeah, I think so. I think she put it on everybody's desk.
We have one from the last one.
Yeah, I think the...
But I see there's some changes.
Yes.
So we don't need this one.
Yes, I would get rid of that one and use the newer, newer one that's in color, which I think makes it much easier to read. And have been, like I said, between Mark and I, the building department and the law department, we've been cutting it and just increasingly changing it, just trying to make it better.
Just, I would just say the copy I, no, I have is not in color. The most recent one we just got, correct?
Yes, it's this one.
This one?
Yeah, there it is.
It's the one without the diagram.
All right. Very good.
There it is.
Okay.
I think that makes it much easier to read.
Yes.
Because you can see the cross-out language on there. So would it, the first part of this, if you're, we're all on that R1, the 1131, it pretty much just crosses out the language that's there and puts it on these tables. So that is purely while we're doing it, just a logistics thing for the department there. And then as we go through here, what it does, when you start to get into the color photos, it starts to do residential design standards. And so like I said, Mark and I really went through and we used a, a longer document in existing language, which is one thing that we try to, to do, is use existing language because that means it's been vetted and gone through the courts and let other people do the battles here so that we don't, the last thing you want to do is be the test subject on the zoning code. You want it to be thoroughly vetted through other municipalities. So really it just kind of goes to the different standards that are there. It talks about standards for corner lots, talks about standards for public and private space, that's in between the road and the front of the house. Gives some stipulations on raised porches, stoops, and lawns, landscaping, utilities, building heights, building materials, roof lines, parapets, front porches, stoops, balconies, window proportions, and porch railings. So if you took out the photos in it, I mean, we're probably talking three, four pages tops worth of standards in here. And what's good about this, this is similar to how we did the commercial. They set the standards that are there that if you can come in and come in and write and you're free to go ahead and do it. So let's say someone comes in with a house that says great and we don't know about it, can easily then go through the BZA. And I think the way to do it would be as a single variance through that as opposed to potentially a series of variances, just depending on the structure of the house. And so really, the one that was more the battle between the building department and sort of Chris, and he had sent the, the letter, I think, that, or the email that was gotten today, was really more towards that, these parkings. So some of the last pages of the document, which is the parking standards. And that really has to do with garages in the front. And what the garages in the front should look like, and I think that's pretty much it's the, the parking without alley standards that's on there. So that discusses ways to do that. He's interested in having it not be a certain percentage of the front of the structure and that it be offset five foot back behind there. I think the building department thought that was potentially a little strict or a little restrictive for houses. So as you review it, I think those are the tug-in war between the two, the two sides.
All right. We have two sides.
Parking with... We do have two, two sides in that argument.
Wow. We've never had that before.
Yes. Everything else, I think, is pretty well self-explanatory and that's where Mark and I have really like vetted it down to like the basic nubs. That's the one that I think is the backbone.
So would really be the chapter 1153 is one we need to really look into?
To really kind of review and I think go over with. But Jerry, go over with Chris, Mark, and by myself, or, you know, those are the, really the ones.
Well, give me the thumbnail sketch, I mean, to save me some time. Just lay it, lay it out for me. What, what are the differences? One of the things I, I wanted to ask is, we, it would seem to me, one of the things that I read was the grading of the land. Well, I don't know how you can change the grading of the land. The grading of land, to me, would have to say, match the, the surrounding area. I mean, you, obviously you couldn't, so you feel that would be part of it, that we'd have to require that they change the grading of the land or it has to conform with adjoining properties, which would be...
Yeah, I can quickly kind of explain that. And Keith had that in his email. That's in that unique situation where you'll see the, they're either, there's a depression or a grade change in the land where they put the garage underneath. So it goes up onto the hill and the garage goes underneath. You see some existing homes that are there, or the garage actually goes down and the house is on the level of it, but it goes down into that. And it's stipulated, stipulated as parking with difficult conditions, topography.
Excuse me. Keith, could, could you, please? So I don't, I keep looking at you and I know you want to say something, so I would prefer... No, I need, you know...
This is where, we're talking about, it's where the garage is kind of in the basement.
Right. Is that saying it's allowed or wouldn't it?
It's allowed.
It is allowed.
And the garage would be in the front?
Yes, the garage would be in the front. It's very similar to, to a lot of properties that we see. I think there's even some on Montgomery Road and other areas that they have the garages.
Barren.
And this allows it and says that that's fine. It just gives a couple common sense things that you can't change the grade to make that situation.
I know. I have a question about, the vacant lot on Quatman Avenue, up on the hill.
Yeah.
It's a good example, Jim. Could that be dug out and a garage put in?
Potentially.
You know the lot I'm talking about?
Yeah, exactly.
You'd need a cable car to get up there.
Yeah.
I think that, yeah, that's a little, one that's a little different.
I mean, yeah, because unless, I don't think that has access off the family, then you're down.
No, it didn't get down that far.
But it would make sense to put an underground garage, you know, at a lower level because by the time you dig it out, John, you know...
Yeah.
You're right. That's a good spot for it.
And now it's red, it's lots with a back line at least 15 feet higher. So that would be, that would qualify with it. Then the front line, they locate the garage in the basement of the street facing facade of the building. So that's just kind of what you're talking about. And this just said the garage door shall be located to one side of the street facing facade. And that just means so that it's, you're not one of those, that that's all it is, is the garage as you pull in. So you have that lot and then instead you just have a garage. And the whole bottom, first floor of the house is a garage and then the second and third floor is your actual home. That's what it's trying to protect against. And that's kind of what the stipulations are, is that so that we're, that the houses, and that's really what the back and forth, what it is, and Chris's main point that he had in that email, that the front of the house is not dominated by a garage, which I think feels, instead of the urban environment that we have here, gives it more into like a suburban, all of a sudden you've got a suburban house plopped in the middle of sort of these early 1900s homes.
Well, I understand that. So I live in a one-floor brick. Okay, so you're not going to put a one-four brick over on Ashland, you know, so I understand that. But what if, if this, the rule or standard is it must conform with the neighborhood or the adjoining properties? That would preface it. And then the rest, Keith, would it be an interpretation of the architectural design? And if it's an interpretation of the architectural design, who makes that decision? I mean, because if it's a standard, a standard, am I correct in saying a standard is a guideline? Or is it, it's not, it's not as firm as a rule or is it sort of quasi-in-between?
If it says shall.
Yeah, if it says shall, it means it's supposed to meet that requirement. If it says it may or should, gives us the opportunities.
Oh, I, yeah, okay. So I guess what I'm looking at is some sort of simplicity because we have a tendency, people in our area have a tendency to take something easy and make it difficult. So I guess what I'm saying is what's the easiest, the best way for the community, but also the best way for the building department, the law department, to move these projects further without impeding progress? Am I making sense?
Right. And my question on this, I, 1153, 30, the last section in here, I could not figure out what we were trying to do. And I understand the idea that we want to match, we want, you know, if a new house comes in and if it's on Cathedral, we want it to look like on Cathedral and have a garage, you know, you drive straight in, the garage is under the house. If it's on, you know, if it's on Ashland, then it's going to look different. If it's down on Hopkins, as you go down the hill on Hopkins, well, there's going to be, I can understand there being different, I just couldn't understand like how much of this was required and, you know, the thing about the four feet, it wants to be four feet underground. It's like, well, if I'm building a house on Carter and everything's flat, does that mean that you have to sink the garage in the backyard four feet down? So that's the thing, so.
This is a rare case scenario, the one at the bottom. I think what we should do is read through the one above it. This is your everyday one dealing with garages. This just happens to be one with, how many places is the back lot line 15 feet higher than the front lot line?
Right, I think that's...
So we're talking...
About 30 homes on Barman, on the south side of the street.
So they could have, that would fit with the garage underneath and the, on the side there. And I think you have some in the neighborhood that have a garage that isn't even...
Yeah, my garage is under that.
So yours would be, as of right, by this language.
Yeah.
If I could jump in a bit?
Sure.
And Greg and I haven't talked, so I don't want to hit him on the blind on this, but Mark and I looked over some of this and I just haven't had a talk, opportunity to talk with Greg on this. But I have more issues than just chapter 1153. I have some issues of the whole document itself. There's a lot of this in this document that I don't necessarily agree with.
Okay.
And I think it makes it too restrictive to build. I understand the concept of doing this and I think there's some good aspects in here. And again, I don't want to hit Greg because I haven't had a chance to talk with Greg on this, so.
All right.
But there are some issues in here that I just don't think are necessary and I think are too restrictive.
All right.
Well, this is not new. Greg and I did talk, I mean, first of all, the secondary dwelling units, I didn't like it at all. I actually strike the whole thing, so I don't think we should be doing that. And we, he and I talked and I said, hey, Jerry hasn't seen this yet, I don't think he's going to like it either. We have worked real hard to not increase our number of dwelling units in this city to allow somebody to put one, you know, put a mother-in-law, I mean, if you want to put a mother-in-law suite within the confines of the house, that's one thing. But if you want to allow somebody to build a, you know, house on top of the garage...
I think that's a, for me, that's a whole separate discussion that I haven't even touched on with it, is the secondary dwelling unit, on that.
Well, Jerry and I went all through this a week. Quite frankly, we struck a bunch of this out that, I agree with Jerry, it's going to be too restrictive.
But again, Greg hasn't had the opportunity to...
Right.
And you guys need an opportunity. It's not fair to hit Greg with this right now, though.
That's why I think it's good we're discussing it so we as a planning commission know there's got to be more outside discussions to work this all together.
Yeah, because there's so many variables. And like I said, in Norwood, boy, if we can, we can figure out a way to start a fight, we will. And this, this thing is going to start a fight. And so there has to be some clarification and there really has to be some community involvement in this one. I'm not one of those ones that the community should vote on every issue, but this is one I believe that it's critical because I might have a few questions, but there are residents out there that, you know, that may look out of a different area. For example, like for me, if you're talking about garages and everything, there's got a lot of variables, the topography of the lot, the width of the lot, you know, and if, if you take a vacant lot now where there was a home there that was removed, with that size of lot, would, could a home even be built there? And are we self-defeating by saying there was a home there once, it's now gone, but according to this, you can't put a home there? I mean, so there's, there's got to be...
If I can read, if we can read through 1153.29, right there. And look at what we've gone through, we tried to make these as sensible as possible here. And this, to me, was the compromise between what Chris, Chris would like to go further if he was here than what we have written here. And this is the compromise that we had here. So ideally, garage doors should not directly face on the streets. For lots without access to an alley, garages should be located to the rear, or, garages should be located to the rear of the lot behind the facade of the building. This ensures that the public streetscape is dominated by pedestrian-scale structures like porch, stoops and landscaping. So we're saying have a driveway to the side like the photo there. If that's not possible, then it says, "The street-facing garage door shall be built to limit the overall massing of the garage door," which means so it doesn't take up the whole structure. Decorative elements such as false door hinges, molding, detail and windows shall be installed to break up the monolithic appearance of standard garage doors. A single door, two garages, a single door, two garage, that fits two cars.
Yes.
You've got the suburban one that just looks like a suburban garage door stuck on floral. Imagine that, I guess is what we're saying.
Sure, okay.
Shall be built to resemble two individual doors using hardware, molding, details and glass. And there's a photo of that kind of right here. We're just saying if you do build a double garage door to, let's match it in with the character of the neighborhood.
So exactly like in my neighborhood, it's, in my neighborhood, it's mostly one-floor plans, brick, you know, three bedrooms, three, and I have down to the driveway with two garage doors. So to make that look like the fancy black hinges and all that...
Would look out of place, yes.
It would, so, so you could, you basically could vary the garage doors from neighborhood to neighborhood. That's what I'm saying by saying conformity to the neighborhood.
Now, Chris was shooting for the photo that you see on the right there, that it's offset five foot back from the front facade.
Okay.
So this was attempting to be...
Oh, okay.
Was attempting to meet the middle ground. So I'm not sure even Chris would be happy with this suggestion because that's what he had specifically said in his email. So this is where it was trying to find the middle ground between where the voting department was coming from by still allowing, like on the new house on Grove, where it has the front door, but adding some architectural detail on that door to break up the massing of it. And if you look at the rest of the house, it fits in right directly with its neighbors, which it talks about into here, that shall not be more than one story plus or minus the neighbor houses so that you don't have a towering house next to the ranch-style houses in your neighborhood so that it sticks with that character. So there are provisions in, inside this part right here that talk about scale and massing so that it fits in with the neighborhood.
Okay. Okay. This is one of the items that I had actually struck out because I thought, I just think that it's too restrictive. I think if you look at the, and I understand where Chris is coming from, and I know that they're trying to make it a happy medium here, but to me, requiring somebody to put windows on a garage or to make it look like a carriage house rather than just giving them the option to put a garage door on it, you're probably adding $3,000 to the house, to the garage door itself. I mean, to me, it's just too restrictive.
You know, can I go counter on that? In my neighborhood, I wouldn't care. I, you know, it's a plain garage door, I wouldn't care, it matches everything else. Now, if I owned a big, if I was fortunate enough to live in one of the presidential streets and say, you know, I may want somebody's house next to mine to mirror mine. I don't know. And so I guess what I'm getting at, I...
Well, that would, I think, would, Tom, I agree with you. I think that would be, and John can probably attest to this as being a real estate agent, it's letting the market determine what's going to be appropriate for each individual area. I mean, you're right, it may be more appropriate in a different area like, like over the presidential streets. Maybe somebody wants to build a new house over there, they have fortune to find a lot, they want to build it and put these type of things in there and spend the money. And, but to me, that's more of a market-driven thing rather than a design standard driven by the city. That's just my opinion.
I'll tell you, because I own a house that would fit, it's not on a presidential street, but it's just like the ones on the presidential, it's the same kind of design, you know, that is, but my thinking is to focus on the garages, like the appearance of the garages, the idea that we're going to match what we have. The garages weren't built when the houses were.
Well, that's good.
The houses are all older than the garage because nobody had cars when those houses were built. And so the, I don't think that there's a standard for garages is the hard thing. I think matching the standards for the houses and the idea of locating the garage. So it's, I mean, I get the idea, we don't want the whole front to be a garage. I mean, that garage door, that makes sense, but it's hard for me to like, to find the design for garage doors that's going to be, that's actually going to match as far as, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, my side of town, I don't know, it's maybe a third, less than half, I'd say of the houses on my side of town have garages.
Right.
So, you know, it seems like an odd discussion because, and you're right, because the neighborhoods are so very different as you go from street to street that it's, it's almost impossible to say, right.
In the state to have a side-loading garage. That's what this, we're just talking about. Ideally, it would be great. Now, it's right there and it's on the side of the, this is the one where you only have that 40-foot front lot where the house takes up the whole street, similar on Grove right there. And if they have a garage door that's facing the street, because that's one of the first things that we do here is, oh, I'd like the, how, why did you let that house with that? All I see from that house is that garage door. I got my house on Floral or Forest and the new house that's next to it, I love it, but all I see is the front door, is that garage. And this is just saying to put some architectural elements. And I think 3,000, I mean, 3,000, we've got the price back in the day, 3,000 is the cost of these whole doors right here, the fancier doors on the one that we did that had a little bit of a carriage look. So a regular garage door costs 1,000 and maybe you're adding 1,500 or 2,000 to the cost of a brand-new house with it, but that sets the tone for the development.
Well, if you're just going to spend $375,000 for a house, what the heck's, what's another three?
If I can ask this for my own clarification, this is just for new buildings and new garages not existing.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Anything that exists is going to bother...
Okay.
There's a section in there, we did, I think the most important part of this, Chris and I certainly don't agree on everything at all, but, and Greg and I agree on more than that, but I think the most important thing is the scale. We don't want to put a three-story on Barman, but we don't want to put a ranch over on Spencer either.
That's what I said.
It's a big thing.
Conforms to the neighborhood.
Front porches, something we've been trying to get for years, front porches should not look like that. They should look more period correct on these houses. I don't care where they're in, whether they're on Arc Loa or whether they're on Floral. There's a style when those houses were built and it's not a wooden deck. So to me, those are the two biggest things. I, I like the new house on Grove. It's a two-car garage, it's a front-load garage, it takes up two-thirds of the front of the house. Short of putting a, I mean, he could have built it standard, he could have put a 10-foot wide driveway that was 120 feet back to a two-car garage, he would have had no green space left, just like everybody else. So he has a very nice, safe, less water-imperious driveway and he retained the entire green space in the back of that house. So, I mean, personally, I like it. I mean, yeah, we've, I've talked to a couple people that didn't like it, but they're just, it's new to them, they've not seen. I think this is what's going to happen in Norwood, I think this is how they're going to build them. The second one is going to be built the same way, except he, the lot, well, the planning commission shortened the lot for him. This is the one on Delaware.
Okay.
Yeah, that was one where we...
Cut eight feet off.
You need to be able to put a...
Yeah, so his, his, he's going to do a tandem, double-deep garage, but it's going to be below the level of the house because he is up on a hill. But that hill was only, I don't know, eight, 10 feet.
Eight feet.
Yeah, something like that.
I hear a couple of points. John, remember we, as a real estate agent, remember we talked in one of these meetings where eventually it's, you know, this city is, I believe, taking off and people are coming in, they're getting bidding wars on house.
Oh, yeah.
There was a house fixed up on Silver Street, everybody complained about it. That house looks like it's brand-new and went, it's $70,000. And they're, they're getting in bidding wars for houses around here. Now, remember we had talked at, I hope I remember right, that eventually in other communities where somebody has come in and purchased two homes and taken them down and then build a...
A mega house, right.
Yeah.
A McMansion.
So in this particular case, like I said, I, I'm not really having community meetings for a thing. But could we entertain the possibility of having two ward councilmen get together and schedule a time where we could go to, like the high school auditorium and have a short presentation and give those council members the information first on what's proposed? Let those council members get with their community and see what their thoughts are. Not if we go for five ward council members, you know, you'll be forever.
Basically, we have a public-wide city hearing.
Yeah.
A public-wide, citywide public hearing.
Right, for...
Yeah, in different locations.
Two, yeah, we could all have, we could all have it at the high school, but it would be for two wards at a time.
Okay.
Bring two ward council members in and invite the members of those two wards, plus a council, you know, a committee at large person, and have them there and have this open discussion. If it's pro and con, that's good. Then, you know, try to keep it brief, you don't want to talk much, you know, like me, but, I mean, and have them tell us what they think. I mean, you'll get people come up and have their voice and their concerns from each... from each ward will be different. And can we, is it possible to tailor standards to a neighborhood? Could you tailor a standard to, you know, for the houses built in '63? Could you, you know, and let them come in, and we'll talk about it, you know, a certain amount of time, and get input, and then somehow we can come together and draft a document after we get all the input? Because I'm telling you, this is one area that I really believe, and like I said, remember Joe, Joe and I used to talk to certain individuals, they wanted to have a community meeting for everything. But this is one area that I think, when you start talking about homes and, and stuff like that, now you're talking really personal things, and that's, that's what I would hope, that we could move forward on, and have them, get the high school, have two wards each time, and, and have a discussion, let them come in, voice their opinion, take notes, have everybody here, you know, yourself, you know, everybody here, and then have a brief discussion about it, and then open it up. Give, somebody give a brief discussion, so that would eliminate me, but we could have somebody give an overall description of what we're planning to do, and what the possibilities are, and what do you think?
Maybe the council people, if they still have ward meetings, could be four hands ahead, "That's what we're looking at," or blah blah.
They, they could put it out, but, but we need to make a turnout as we can from, if we have those two wards meet one week, two wards meet the next week, two more. Combine all that information, and then try to come to a consensus to pass on to the BZA, or, you know, or the, the council. And, and so that way, the council gets it, now they're briefed. They were at the meetings, and they know what was said, and they're ready to go.
Do you want to do another meeting in-house before we do that?
Uh, yeah, I think we, I think we need to...
With the law department?
Kind of get our ducks in a row.
You, Tim?
Sure, because we don't, last thing I would hope is, you know, we would go to the citizens, and I hate, I don't want to use the word be, not unified, but, you know, we, we really don't have a precise goal, or...
Go with the final draft.
The final draft, yeah. I, I think we need to do that, I think it's a good idea to have the council representatives getting involved. I mean, we can either do it at the high school, or do it down at the community center, wherever, or if they want to do it each individually, each ward person, I mean, I think that's good. And, because if we tried to get everybody in here for a public hearing, we'd most probably be here for a couple days.
Do you want to have that meeting and bring it back to Planning Commission in May, prior to doing any of that?
Do what now?
Have, have the meeting in-house, and then bring it back to you before we start with council?
Oh, yeah.
And I think it'd be interesting to have Chris with it.
Yeah.
Oh, he should.
If I'm bad, I mean, he wants, this would, it's actually his original brainchild, and it's an interesting subject, because you can go either way. You could come and just say, "Hey, let's let anything come in," you could get these neat, like, contemporary residential things that are modern and whatever, and some people like that look, other people think that that doesn't fit with what their, their image of Norwood. So I, I think you get a lot of varying opinions.
But if there, if there's difference of opinions, there's, you know, if we can come together to give them something to present to them, but if there's difference of opinion, there's nothing, I mean, there's difference of opinion on council all the time, so there's really nothing wrong with it. If we come out in uniform, "Well, I agree with all robots," they're going to say, "You guys had your mind made up before you came here." That's exactly what they'll say. "You really don't want to know what we think." Yes, we do. And if there's a difference, then there's a difference.
And we don't want, Planning Commission doesn't want to report out, "Here's the way we want to change the whole housing code."
Right.
And then council get feedback, and then, "Well, I don't know about this," or you don't want to start, it's better to start that discussion at this level...
At the base level.
To get a better, instead of going, who knows what might come out of that, so, and how that would all go.
By then, by the time council gets it, they'll have read it five times.
Exactly.
We're just looking for a minimal, like I said, we have a document that was, a series of documents that were much bigger than this, one, many more stipulations, and we're just trying to get a minimal amount of coverage to protect ourselves before something comes in that we're just like, whoa, and we have no provisions right now on the housing. And you can come in with pretty much whatever you, you want, if it fits on the lot.
And once this...
And I understand that, that makes sense.
Can I, can I just, this is kind of a broader question, but my understanding was the '85 zoning code, essentially no house in Norwood was compliant with things like the setbacks and, and the requirements that were in there. It's like, if anything, if any house burnt down, you couldn't have rebuilt it the way it was already on the lot because of that. And I know that we made some changes over the last 15 years or so, but I'm just wondering if that, if, if that's something that needs to be addressed, along the lines of, well, if you're on, you know, Mills, when there is, you don't have 10 feet to set back from anything, for example, I mean, if there's some, some provision that would allow, for the most part, most lots to be built on without having to go to BZA?
Well, there is already.
Just that kind of thing.
The, the, Building Department can reduce the sideyard setbacks by half, which is a tremendous help, you know, on a 25-foot lot, I don't know what you'd build on a 25-foot, you know, but they're down there. So we could do that already, you don't want to reduce them down to nothing, I mean, that's for sure.
Right, I was just, just to get a sense.
But you could reduce them, for example, from six or eight down to three or four.
Okay. I thought that there's, to some extent, that had been addressed, and I, but if it hadn't really, then I wanted to, you know, this would be the time to take care of that.
Chart, so if you want to review that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the charts redone.
Table.
I didn't study the chart, sorry.
Now, we did have one where we did, like, in non-conforming, like, residential, and I, we made a provision, kind of on a non-conforming, what we did in the city of Deer Park, for a non-conforming property, we allow it, if it got burnt down to the ground, got destroyed over 60%, you have that provision where you can't get it built back. If it was a residential house, we'd allow that to get built back once. If it got damaged over 60% versus a non-conforming, so we would, we would not do that, but that's probably a...
Right, but there shouldn't be a problem, like, putting a similar, for all, for all the vacant lots we have now, nobody should really have a problem putting back a house that's essentially the same.
It may not go back exactly where the other one was. If the other one was like mine, it was 14 inches off the property line, no, you couldn't put it back. But you can put back a house and meet setbacks, on all of them, I think.
I, I would just say, goodbye Sherman and Lawrenson, you'll never get a, you'll never get...
That one will never get built on.
Right, right.
And neither will Elsmere and...
Yeah, so I mean, there are some exceptions, that there's no way in earth...
Elsmere and Flor, how they ever got a five-unit building with a grocery underneath it, I'll never know. You look at that lot, it's, it was all building. So, I mean, not every lot's going to...
So there are a few, a few, I want to say, exceptions, but not many.
I think most of the ones that we've taken down, we were just talking about how many have come down, I think, we counted, what, 14?
Yeah, at least.
At least 14. Probably those are all mostly buildable.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, some of them, the, the tough ones were, I think, what was the one that...
Down here on Section, that's a tough one, but...
The one we had the store on.
Oh, that, yeah, Franklin and Cortland.
Franklin and Cortland, yeah. tobacco.
Well, no.
Yeah, I...
Smaller than that.
I demolished that building, I was the operator.
But that was a tiny...
That's back when I was a construction guy.
That was a tiny lot, that, that, you could hardly build that out of back.
So, and the other thing, that's on my mind, is, once this is developed, this is going to be in effect for a long time. And I believe, the eternal optimist, that this city's going to keep getting better, and better, and better, and better, and, and I think this, this legislation or this standards will come more into play down the road. And so, I think it's vitally important. So, how, how, what's, what's the goal now? Do we come to agreement on something, and then start telling councilmen to set up the meetings?
Yes. I, I think we, yeah.
Okay.
We do that for our May agenda.
Yeah, we want to bring back a final draft for y'all to look at, at the May agenda, and then at that point...
And have every, the, the in-house people here, so we can discuss it and see what we got, yeah. I mean, I think it's, it's important enough, and it is serious enough, you just can't do this in, in, in one month and say, "Okay, here..."
Boy, I agree.
"Let's, let's do it."
Oh, no.
Yeah.
If you read through it and see any provisions that are...
Yes, we could add, right.
You know, let, let us know. I mean, I know Mark and I, Jerry, we never did get to meet there, but we did try to go through and make it pragmatic.
We cut a lot out, but, you know, not everybody's going to agree with everything, and, and I agree with Jerry, we shouldn't be too restrictive, but on the other hand, you don't want to just do nothing, and let them build whatever they want.
I agree 100%.
And then, you know, now, personally, I like that modern house on Erie Avenue, but a lot of people don't. Have you seen it? It doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. It's, it's a big, have you seen it, John? You like it?
The one over by, I guess you call it Eastside Park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't fit in with the neighborhood.
No, not at all.
But it's not a historical district either, and we don't have any historical districts.
I like contemporary homes.
I do too. I like it very well.
Where the residents like it in floral, I, I don't know if that's what, something to decide, you know, that's the, the public discussion.
Well, I mean, see, this, this is sometimes, here again, I know this is going to come to a shock to some, but we have other neighborhoods rather than a presidential district. I know that doesn't always come to the surface, but, but we have other neighbors, neighborhoods that, different than Flor, and, and they care just as much about their neighborhood as everybody else does. And unless somebody goes and asks them, how do you know? Because if they come back and say, "Well, you didn't ask me," well, you know, but still, you have to give the opportunity for somebody to come up and say what they think. And then after, like Mr. Gears said, we, we take this and come, finalize it in May, set up the meeting, and then if we get an overwhelming consensus, you know, in each neighborhood, who knows? Maybe it can vary, maybe it can change, you know, I don't know. But this is one of those ones that I 100% believe that we, it's almost mandatory that we involve somebody, because when you start changing what can go in next door to them, now, throw one more problem up, then it'll shut up. What happens if somebody comes in and takes one of these older homes, or one of these homes, and remodels it and totally changes it? If they make it look modern, if they have glass all over, if they have pieces of metal swinging around, and they call it art, what do you do then?
Well, I think we would want it to comply with those standards as well.
Does this say, you know, if you take out, like, you're talking about, you left part of a wall and replaced everything else in order to get around the zoning. But I think ours would be, you know, you've done this, what, some percentage of the building is replaced.
Sixty.
60%, then these standards, the new, you know, the new, new construction standards would apply.
No, but I'm saying, so, so they take a normal, the house, and I'm going to, I just bought it, and I want to put $80,000 in it, and I want to remodel it.
Or change it from a single, or a two-floor, for a ranch.
Yeah. I want to take this house down, then I want to put, you know, it's down...
We want those standards to protect that, because...
So you don't go ahead and just cut off the whole second floor, so now I've got a ranch.
So if it's, you could put a remodel job in there and, and actually cause just as much trouble, so that's something else. I, I like to pose problems and let you guys solve them.
John, to, to kind of piggyback on what you're saying, let's look at the opposite, say we got a ranch, and somebody says, "Look, I, I've got a family, I want to go ahead and put another story on it, and I'm meeting the height requirements, why can't I do that?"
Yeah, it's one story. I think our proposed standards, say one story, you can go, one story above or one story below.
That's, that's, then you're getting into, you have to consider property rights, too. I mean, you really have to be careful on what you restrict.
It depends on who you ask, when it comes to whether you have to respect anyone's property rights.
Well, yeah, you're right, Keith.
Well, up in the land of ranches, where the mayor and I live, there are some, there are some two-story, two-story...
There are, there are.
I mean, suppose Mary Ann says, "I like steps."
Not really.
And, "We need to tear down our house, and I want to put Victoria in there." Now, but I mean, it's an example, you suppose, you know, so, what do you do then?
We go up to Montgomery, can just send Montgomery, where they, they take the ranches down, maybe two or so lots, and they've done it now, and there's a one stretch just off Montgomery Road, just above the Crowver there, and you turn off, I think, Deerfield Road, and they've done it almost through a whole stretch. So now it all is, it's a totally different neighborhood. So I mean, that's the other side of the coin with that, is that good, is that revitalizing the neighborhood, or is that, you know, something that, so that's the catch-22 of it.
Certainly a bigger tax base.
With this, what we're trying to do with this is plan for the worst-case scenario and give some provisions. We can always go through the variance process, like we, we talk about through our commercial districts and all of that. We're, we're trying to do some level of protection for the city for the worst-case scenario, and to avoid the biggest issues that could potentially come up.
Because, the fact of the matter is, a lot of people won't care till all of a sudden something pops up, and they'll say, "Where were you guys?"
Yeah, and we have nothing.
What have you been doing?
That's the best reason to have public meetings, so that we have discussions, we can write it, because no matter what somebody builds, somebody's not going to like it.
I agree.
One way or the other. So, either they're going to be mad because, "Oh, we're too restrictive, and I can't believe they're not letting us do it," or they're going to be mad because something went up and they don't like it. So, you know, we're doing whatever, we got the input, and which way we want to go with this, and so, yes, I agree 100%.
Sure, we get an agreement, then, yeah, get together in-house, and get something done, or work on it, so we can have, work on, discuss it next month. Okay. Thank you, Greg. Anything else? Any other new business?
And I'll make a motion to excuse the absent member.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we hear a motion to adjourn?
Can I thank Keith and Greg very much for your input and the time and effort that you've put into it?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Have more.
Have more. All right, can you have a vote, take a vote on that, please, Jerry, to adjourn the meeting?
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Gears?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.